This meeting of the City Council was called at order. Adam, recorded, will you please call a roll?
Yes, Mayor Studer Baker.
Here.
Councilors Lamott.
Here.
Wendland.
Here.
Manz.
Here.
Koho.
Here.
O'Neil.
Here.
And Win.
Here.
Ms. Simpson, has anyone asked to provide public comment?
No, Your Honor, no one has requested to provide comment today.
Okay, then we'll proceed with the business. First, the study session, item 4.1 is a report from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force.
Okay, Mayor, if you would give me just a moment to escort all those participating in this agenda item into the room. All right, we have everyone in the room, you're welcome to proceed.
Okay, great. Mr. Taylor Cruz, are you ready to present?
Yes, sir, I am ready to get things going here, thank you.
Great.
And I'm just gonna get started by really acknowledging all of you on the City Council. Because I think that one of the things that you intended to do with even starting the boards and commission process was diversifying boards and commissions and advisory groups. And I just want to remind you that you've done a very good job with this DEI Task Force. Because the diversity of race, ethnicity, age, gender, ability, disability, intellectual thought has been pretty amazing. And I just want to make sure you're aware that this is your doing. And so, in terms of wanting to build diversity in groups, you have a model for it already. And so, I'm just really thankful that you chose to do this work. And the reason I want to say that is because working with this team has been pretty amazing. The things that you're seeing have been put forward by the team. And they've been editing things, and they've been working very hard. And in fact, I have to like hold some of them back because they're ready to go full bore, and we need to just pace ourselves. So I want to start there by just really acknowledging your work and your willingness to do this work at a community level. I think that's really important. And so, I'm just gonna jump in and frame a couple of things. Because you have all the documents before you, and I really want you to be able to have a conversation with some of the Task Force members as well. And what I'm gonna share with you, we spend a lot of time talking about our own racial issues, and our own biases, and really spending time understanding individually, not only what each person is bringing into this work, also about how we're stepping into it, acknowledging that we have our own biases, we have our own judgments around it. So that's one piece that's important, is that this work comes through some discussion where we've had some agreements. Sometimes we haven't always agreed, and yet we have always agreed to leave and come back in as colleagues and as folks who have a shared vision in terms of supporting this work. And one of the pieces of work that the Task Force put together is kind of a lens in terms of how they approached the work. And there were these four pillars: representation, acceptance, belonging, and fairness. So, representation is essentially that, that ensuring that represented voices are sought and represented in practice. Acceptance is making sure that all of those people feel a part of the group, and that their differences are valued. Belonging, build intentional and mindful awareness in terms of what we're doing. And building a culture with respect and ongoing commitment to this work. And then fairness, identifying systemic issues and challenges in achieving this vision. And so, what you've got in front of you in the conversation today is all related to these four pillars of representation, acceptance, belonging, and fairness. And so, I just wanted to highlight that and also acknowledge the work of the city staff that have been supporting us, Charity, and Martha, and Megan, that it's been really a great opportunity that I think the folks who are speaking on behalf of the Task Force, which they are Mondrell and Lisa. And of course, if you have questions for any of them, they're all here. So I'm gonna stop there and just let you go ahead and ask your questions and have a dialogue with the Task Force. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you also for the work that the Task Force does. I'm delighted to hear you're very pleased, and I'm not surprised they're doing amazing work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions, Council Lamott?
Yes, I have three questions. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep. The first one is on facilitators. I understand that one or two people from the DI Task Force will facilitate each of the five focus groups. And I just want to make sure that we have people that have experience in facilitating, not anything against anybody. But this could be highly charged, and we may need to pull things out of people. But if somebody, anybody on the Task Force that has facilitated in the past, that would be great. But if they don't have that experience, I think we gotta make sure that we get neutral objective facilitating at each one of those. Maybe even having Bill facilitate each one, but let's talk about that. And then I got my other question. So, facilitators, yes, no, experience, not, who's in, who's out?
I'm gonna let the Task Force wave your hand or speak up about your facilitation desire. Lisa, do you want to share?
Sure, I'll start. I have done a lot of public outreach work in things as glamorous and not at all emotionally charged as prison sighting. So I definitely have had that experience, and I am one of the people that has volunteered to be a facilitator. I don't want to speak for everyone on the Task Force, and I can't remember honestly if everybody agreed to facilitate. But Bill did say he could, you know, be the facilitator for all of them, but it would be helpful to have other community members involved. And it probably will allow us to hear more voices and have more sessions if we have more than just one person who can facilitate. And I think it allows us to make that connection with Lake Oswego residents too, beyond just one person.
Okay, well then that's great. If we have, you know, three, four, or five people on the Task Force that have the experience, I think Daniel and I, Daniel McCarty and I talked about this, then that's great. I just want to make sure that we move the conversations and get things out and really get a chance to discuss, so that's great.
And one of the things we would do, John, is to make sure that we all share in kind of a facilitator training that has sentence structures and ways to deepen the conversation and to make sure that we're all have the same set of questions and are supporting the same level of dialogue in each group. And the idea was that if we had, let's say, three facilitators that had 15 people in each group, then we could actually, in one, two-hour session, meet with almost 45 people, 15, yeah, about 45 people. And so, and so for the format each week would be a topic item. So we do HR all one week, facilities all one week. So we wouldn't be mixing things up either, which would help in that consistency.
Great. My second question is, I've raised this with staff already, and that's on the recruitment letter in the form. There's a statement in here about systemic barriers that exist within our community. And having worked on surveys for 30-some years in my career, we have to be as neutral objective as we can. And when I hear that, I think we're already saying there's systemic barriers. There probably is, or maybe there isn't. But I think we need the word "that may exist" in city structure. Because I think it's a leading question, and I think it's just the wordology there to make sure that people aren't led like, yes, there's something bad, and we gotta get into it. If there is bad, we want to hear it, but let's be careful in how we phrase that question.
So that one's already been changed. So it does say systemic instead of systematic, and it says "may".
Perfect. Third thing is if we can just talk about, again, back to survey experience. We are picking people from recommendations and networks of all our people, including the DI Task Force. I think you asked us for recommendations.
Yep.
That gonna be the pool of folks, or is there gonna be a just informal reach out to people and do kind of the, you know, anonymous reach out? I know it's hard to get people to come, but if people are bringing them in, is that gonna be okay as far as, you know, objectivity? Or do we have to do a separate group?
I mean, I think we can talk about this. Because one of the focuses of the Task Force was to focus specifically on a number of people who have been underrepresented, or maybe don't have their voice at every council meeting, as one target group. And then doing a Survey Monkey tool that's anonymous for those who can't make it to the focus group. Because obviously, we have a timeline on this, so we can't leave it open-ended. And so, doing a Survey Monkey process that has the same questions and allows people who can't make it to a focus group but want to have input, be able, and that could be a larger catchment area. And so, I think, and speak up Lisa or Mondrell, but I believe the focus of the initial focus group was to just make sure that we're capturing folks that you know in the community that have come to you and said, "I have an issue, I don't have an issue", so that we capture their voices. And folks who haven't been, as heard, I think, in the community as well. Because everybody on the Task Force has a group that they can connect to as well. So we just want to make sure, because if we have 500 people for focus groups, there's no way that we have a timeframe that's gonna allow for that.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions, Council Manz?
Yes, I...
Can't hear you.
You're muted.
Oh, I'm unmuted, you can't hear me?
Now we can.
Now we can.
Mine is less than a question than a statement of support for all the work that has been done. I had the pleasure of looking at the applications as they came in, and I feel very strongly that there is not a person on the Task Force that could not more than successfully complete any part of this program. Now that said, I do have my fiduciary responsibility to look at the end product, but I am duly impressed with the amount of work that's been done by the Task Force and by Bill Dela Cruz in a very condensed amount of time during this time of COVID and racial injustice. So I would like to offer you all thanks, and with that, I will pull back, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Win?
Hello, everyone. Thanks for participating in our interview process. I hope you found it, I don't know, do we have any feedback from that? Were we okay, or were we just horrible?
Well, first, John, that wasn't the lens they were bringing. So nobody came back and said anybody was horrible or any of that. So we haven't yet debriefed that fully. And what we want to do in our next meeting is to actually debrief everybody's experiences. And then I think, I'm gonna let Mondrell jump in here too, because I know he has some ideas about how to bring that back. And so, I'll let you jump in too, Mondrell.
Yeah, and we don't have to spend incredible amount of time on it, but I think there's, it's not only what the, it's not only bringing those answers forward and operationalizing it, but it's trying to figure out, well, what do you do with these answers after you have it? How do you discern between what's a good answer versus a bad answer? Whether we need to structure it as a rubric, or it maybe doesn't need to be as fixed as a rubric, but something that gives us sort of examples of what are the different components that we're sort of looking for, for an answer. And again, not to take away the full, you know, ability for each, every person to sort of judge, but sometimes it is helpful to actually know the purpose of the question, and what are the, again, what are the components of an answer? So just giving you some more instruction on that, maybe something that we're keeping in mind.
Thank you.
Right. And I think I'll just add to that, John, that the feedback was, it was a very positive experience for everybody. And they were really glad that you supported the Task Force in being able to be a part of that. And some of them were actually taken aback when some folks said, "Tell us what you think", because we really set them up to just be there to observe. So some gave feedback, and others said, "No, I'll just wait". So I think if any of you felt someone's hesitancy in answering a question, it was because we had really structured it around just observing, and then kind of taking in, and then creating a feedback process so that we could then get you all that information.
Well, I know living in Lake Oswego as long as I have, it's very seldom that you find somebody from Lake Oswego that doesn't have an opinion and wants to give input. The other part is that I think it was, it was good to have everybody there. And I thought it was, hopefully you saw kind of the process that we go through and the types of people that step up for service. We really had wonderful candidates, and it's a good reflection of Lake Oswego showing their volunteer, you know, kind of commitment to the community. And anything that we can do to make the process better, we're all for it. I guess I have a question on your, on the survey, the survey signup. There's kind of been, I think, the one thing that I would love to figure out how to capture is experiences that people have in Lake Oswego, and when they occurred. Because I will say that part of it is, as, sometimes people have been around for a long, long time, and they go back to their long, long time ago experiences, and then others are more current. And try to capture to see if we've been somewhere, and we're, you know, and where are we now? And whether we've gotten better, or stayed the same, or gotten, you know, gone backwards. But I think it would be helpful for me certainly to find out if we've, you know, if there's target points, if you can somehow extract from people, have we changed? Have we gotten better? Obviously, I think the subject of DEI is fairly new in definition, but it's been around forever. It's just that it's more defined right now, especially in the last two or three years, where we've kind of been able to put some structure around it and have more of a bigger dialogue. So people are probably more aware of it. But I'd like to know kind of if we can somehow extract the history part or past experiences and see if people are getting better. And also, you know, I know that there's some people that are brand-new to the community, and they won't have a history point. But, you know, if you could extract that out. But I like how you're approaching things, I love the questions. I think, you know, like everything Lake Oswego, you guys are top performers. You've got things dialed in quite well, so I appreciate all the work.
So let me, let me make sure I'm understanding. So what you would like to see is maybe a trajectory of experience? So if somebody's been here for 20 years, let's say, so what's the difference between when you moved here and today? Something like that, or, okay, versus someone who's just gotten here? And we may get to some of that, I don't know how in-depth the final report will be. Because you can see the questions don't really tap into tell us so much when, but just what have your experiences have been in these processes? But I think to the degree that we can look at a chronological approach, I think we will do that. I just, just kind of balancing expectations too, because you can see there's a lot in there.
And one might help on the actual questions that And one might help on the actual questions that they ask. You might put, how long have you lived in Lake Oswego? Just adding that, just a reference point.
Well, I want to compliment Daniel because he's taking notes. And I'm sure he's writing some of this down. Because he actually brought forward a lot of those initial draft questions and especially all of the demographics. So you'll see, that's why we asked about such a variety of things. So, thank you.
Councilor Cole?
Oh, I was and am the liaison to this task force. And so I echo what's been said. I've been enjoying the expertise of everyone and learning far more than I contribute. What hasn't been said though, and should be, is that prior to launching into what this new phase has been, and of course, the virus stepped in for a while and we were unable to have public meetings. But we're definitely back on track again now. Was that Assistant Manager Megan Phelan, as well as charity, put on a very extensive couple of meetings about what hiring practices are in place now, looked at questionnaires and other documents, as well, of course, as the boards and commissions. And so consequently, before even this began, they were educating themselves on what we've been doing as a basis for what we could do going forward. And that was extremely interesting.
Councilwoman? You're muted.
Yeah, I got it. Sorry about that. Again, thank you for the DEI Task Force, for all the work you're doing. Again, I'm not going to repeat what has been said already, but we are very thankful for your work. Question, so I wanted to know a little bit more, again, you covered it a little bit. But for those that necessarily can't attend the focus group, is, I can see, sometimes I feel like there may be people that may not be able to attend, but then the alternative is putting things in writing. And I think that that may be also problematic too. There's another way that we can provide, just another avenue for people to still maintain. Plus, a reason could be that they don't want to attend to focus meetings because they want to maintain the confidentiality. But if there's another way that we can maybe have a one on one or something, or maybe on a one on one versus in a group setting. That may make, make sure that some voices may be heard. Because I think there may be some apprehension sometimes about putting people's very personal experiences down on paper and trusting that they will be kept in confidence. So is there, have you thought about any other possible mechanisms?
We've thought about a lot. I think that if there are specific people that come up where you feel like that is something they really need, I think I would probably commit to doing one on one either over the phone or social distance to be able to just get their feedback. And knowing that our timeframe for all of these is about a month, a month and a half, starting sometime late August and moving all the way through September. So we just have to be conscious of that. And until the invitation goes out, we really don't know what the signup is going to look like. How many people are going to want to engage in these? And so I think once we have a little more understanding, then we can start to really build the Zoom meetings versus, if they're small enough groups and we have enough room, we could do them in person. So, and then the survey will just be a part of that, this Survey Monkey piece for folks. And we can actually put dialogue boxes into the Survey Monkey so that people can just write their thoughts as well. So I think we're pretty open. Just a matter of seeing who signs up and who's okay with being in a group and who would prefer just to be with one or two people. Does that help?
Councilwoman?
It does, yeah.
I think this is getting us all excited that we're really rolling now. And I think this is great. I want to echo two things. Councilor Wynn's point, I had the same thing. I'm wondering if on the forums, we actually put a number that they can contact Bill directly if they really need to talk offline and not be online or in a Zoom meeting. Just I think something simple for a five minute conversation, even if you met for coffee somewhere, just to have that option for them. And then back to Councilor Wenland's point, I think that's a good one. Because if someone said, oh, I had problems in HR in the city, at City Hall. Okay, but it was ten years ago. Then it's reflective of what we're doing now. And I know we can't get too precise on these things. But it may be to say, oh, the facilitators, okay, you had a problem getting any traction with hiring or something at City Hall. When was that? Oh, that was in nineteen ninety-eight. Okay, well, let's talk about that. Do you think things have changed? I think we just got to have a little bit of that spectrum on time. Because I think some folks may just be bringing this back to today and saying, the city's got these issues. If it's fresh, then we really got to deal with it. But anyway, I just want to echo what Councilor Wenland said and Councilor Wynn said.
Yeah, and one way to approach that could be if somebody, if we heard, let's say, three people say something about six years ago in HR when we presented that to you all or to the HR folks, they can say, yeah, we had that issue then and here's how we've changed it. Which again, gives you all information to say, this did happen. And here's what's in place now to ensure that it happens at a lower level or doesn't happen at all. So I think we can look at it from both of those perspectives. So it's not so much, it happened ten years ago and it's irrelevant. It's just, it happened ten years ago and here's the changes that the city's already made to address. Does that make sense, John?
Right. Great.
Councilor Neil?
Yesterday, I had two of our commission and board meetings, one with the Art Council and one with our Sustainability Board. And the DEI Task Force should be happy to know that both of them have high priority to work on DEI. But the Sustainability Group said they went out, talked to some specialists, but they came back that they were very, very expensive, you know, to come and help them on sustainability issues and DEI. I think the Art Council, it was a little easier. They're just going to really go out and promote hard that they have a very diverse group of artists come. And not only just maybe for Gallery Without Walls, but, and I think they've done a pretty good job in the last couple of years of having some really diverse artists come and do our weekly art shows. And Counselor Lamont sits on that board. I'm doing it from the city side. He does it from the board side. But I think anything you could do as a group to help some of our boards and commissions, this is just two out of the many we have. They also, their board chairs really enjoyed our ninety minute session and wanted to make sure that that session would be available to their complete group. So there's, there's something that could keep you guys busy.
I'm only laughing, Skip, because most of them have already reached out to me and want to do something. And one of the things I will say is that I don't know if people need to necessarily bring an expert in sustainability and DEI as much as understanding kind of what you all went through in that ninety minute session, that what we're really talking about are the biases that we have, both individually and systemically. And who's, who's being served, who's not being served, who do we want to invite new? And then having them kind of take that learning and then extrapolate it to what they do around sustainability. So I had a conversation with somebody on that committee. And basically, they said, we want to bring more diverse people into some of the things that we do. And so my question was, to what end? It's not just to bring in people who look different. It's something deeper than that. And so sometimes it's just having a deeper level conversation, which I think there's, anybody on this task force could support that. And then get them to think about, now, if you look at it from the perspective of sustainability, what groups or neighborhoods or folks aren't always included in those conversations?
I think.
Another way to approach it.
Yeah, one of the items that came up was the effect of being more sustainable might have an effect on a certain group of people. And for instance, sustainability is really pushing to eliminate all gas powered lawn maintenance equipment. And, you know, how would that affect, you know, all the landscape people which have a very, very high group of Hispanic people that are in that business? You know, would they be harming them? So at least now they're thinking about it. I would say two years ago, they probably wouldn't, you know. It's just, hey, we want to eliminate that in Lake Oswego, so be it. So.
Yeah.
We're starting to think about those kind of things.
And I think that's the first step in increasing self-awareness is now that people are thinking about it and what are the directions we need to take? And the hope is with these focus groups that we are able to bring back more of that information to all of you to then think about what are the next steps forward for the city.
Yeah, Councilwoman?
Just one follow up to the boards and commission interview process. If you guys can look at it from the standpoint of, I know Mandrel said something about how to add it, add things to the rubics sort of or not. I guess from a fresh set of eyes from all of you guys who, not just from a DEI standpoint, but just from a citizen's standpoint, you all sat through interviews for several hours and thank you for doing that. But if there's a reflection from your, from your viewpoint of how maybe we can either change the process or get it better refined, I think that might be helpful. And then the other part is to look at our recruiting processes. I mean, we try to get almost every group or publication or recruiting aspects that we can think of. But if you can look at how we do that and then maybe give us some feedback on anything that we're missing on getting people to apply. Because that's the, you know, you can, you can perfect or try to perfect the interviewing process. But if you don't have candidates coming to interview, that kind of defeats kind of the part of the process to me. I mean, you need to get people in to interview and interested to be part of the, you know, the board and the commission. So if there's anything from your perspective that we can look at on the recruiting aspect, that would be helpful too. So.
Yeah, I think there were a lot of ideas. And I think it was just really helpful to be part of the interview process so that everybody could see what the pool looked like. And then as we go into the next round and the recommendations, I'm pretty sure that some of those things about here's where you could possibly recruit will come from the task force as well.
Great. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
So on that, following up on Councilor Wenland there. Megan, are we due sooner than later to talk about the boards and commissions' experience? Is it coming up soon, like in September or?
I think that will be a part of the overall recommendations that come back from the DEI Task Force before the end of the year. There are scheduled to come back to you with updates, I think at least one or two more times before that. But the final recommendations won't be till closer to the end of the calendar year.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at trying to talk about the commission, boards and commission recruitment while it's fresh in everybody's mind. Because I sent my notes in, I think Daniel McCarroll James had his notes quickly done. You've already talked about it as a task force. So I think while it's fresh, we should try and address it. Because I think we're all experienced with four years of it or four months of it or all the four days we went through it. So the sooner the better, I think it'd be great.
Well, I know the task force is ready to talk about it. I wanted to kind of hold them back a little bit because we weren't ready. But if you're ready to do that, we can figure out a way to encapsulate the information that we have and put something together.
Early September for me would be great.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Dela Cruz. Thank you, members of the task force for joining us. We appreciate you.
Okay, thank you all. We'll look forward to your work together moving forward.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item four point two, intergovernmental relations policy. We have a printed policy suggestion. It was done by our intern. I think it's well written. There's some issues, of course. We need to make sure that we are the ones setting the policy. And we would need to look at how much authority the city manager's office really has in some of these issues. So we need to, we need to monitor a little bit. Councilman, you had a statement?
Yes, I do. I wanted to thank our intern, Jordan, for the amount of work that he put into this. Being our brand new intern, it's not easy to synthesize this sort of information into something new, something that we haven't spent a lot of focus on. So I applaud him. And as you said, Mayor, there's things that we probably want to tighten up as a council. But I couldn't be more happy that Jordan's with us.
So Your Honor, is it okay if we let Jordan make a brief presentation, sort of summarizing the issues before you all start wading into the discussion? I think it'd be.
No, we don't want to hear from him.
I feel compelled to mention to you too that I believe this is Jordan's first presentation to any city council anywhere, even though he's been around the city government for quite a bit of his career. And so I'm only sad for him that he doesn't get to sit at the little table, that he has to be on Zoom.
I've had the opportunity to meet with Jordan a lot of times, so I'm sure he's able to handle the pressure. So go for it.
All right, Jordan, can you give him a brief overview?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Steter Baker and City Council. My name is Jordan Parente and I am the 2020 Kinkade Intern. Before you today is a council report recommending that council direct staff to present a resolution adopting an intergovernmental relations policy, IGR. This report was written in support of council initiative B, develop a clear intergovernmental policy and strategy to guide our work with the state, regional, county, and other jurisdictional partners in support of the 2020 council goal for support strong operational practices and fiscal policies that increase public trust in the city. The intent of adopting a policy is to help fulfill council goals and initiatives in an efficient and effective manner by streamlining relations with other governmental organizations. The recommendation is for a policy framework which supports council goals and includes a feedback mechanism to help council and the city manager's office update, up to date on these external relations. As you're all aware, it is city council's role to set policy and the job of the city manager's office to coordinate and support that effort. This proposed policy is designed to be in support of the structure. I hope that I have captured the leadership role of council and how the charter spells out the roles of council and staff. The staff report before you divides IGR policy by level of government. It suggests that the city's affiliations with the National League of Cities and the League of Oregon Cities serve as a backstop for tracking initiatives at the federal and state level. If the city council has not taken a position on an issue, the CMO will ask council for direction prior to contacting federal representatives. Or if the national or state league take a position that is not consistent with that, with one that the city supports, the CMO will gauge council for direction. For city representative.
CMO, by the way, is city manager's office, correct?
Thank you. Yes.
CMO?
For the city representatives at the regional level, such as metro, county governments, TRIMET, and other local governments, it's recommended that representatives report back to the city manager's office and their corresponding board, committee, working group, or department before and after issues are put to a vote. Another recommendation is for technical staff representatives appointed by the city manager's office and policy representatives appointed by council or commission. Represent positions adopted by city council. For council appointees, this is consistent with the city charter in that the mayor will select and council will confirm appointees. To avoid infringing upon free speech, if a representative makes statements and talks with external partners which are not consistent with the spirit of council goals, it should be clearly stated as an individual opinion. I am now ready for your questions and discussion.
I don't think there will be any. Councilor Cole? You got to appreciate, just a little bit of humor in there.
Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, it was good. It was good.
I want to, I want to just take a few minutes because this was uh the major part of my uh being on city council, this area. And I appreciate your uh your vocal presentation, Mr. Parente, which does cut through your written uh in a way that was very helpful. So let me just say what I think we need to have affirmatively in the resolution. And then in the event that anybody thinks that's wrong, then they can speak up. But I think that your uh oral presentation made it clear that the manager office manages staff and that the city council remains the ultimate authority on public policy. I thought that uh the manager in your, in your written uh material, I thought it was clear that the manager was to assign uh various staff to the various meetings. And uh that would then be a reporting back to the manager. The staff would report back to manager. I think that's unbelievably good. And I would like to see that happen because there are written materials and uh listening to the meetings would be a wealth of information to open up to council and thereby the city many opportunities. So I would definitely, and then they in turn through the city manager or however that I G R team, that they would report to the city council so that we have that feedback on uh a low burner uh until something, you know, might change where we actually have a vote. Uh, I, your written materials uh were changed a little bit by your oral because the mayor does by charter appoint the counselors. And you know, as I've said, Mayor Stewart Baker has been very open to people with interest and expertise and the time frankly to pick up on these various committees. Um, and I've been very grateful, uh, but they, there had not been, you know, heartburn about that. It was, it was uh him hoping to get somebody who would, who would get in there and do the work and it's very time-consuming. Where we had a, where we had a gap. And I think that uh this, this was the major gap in my mind was where we didn't have a good feedback or reporting back from the counselors who were attending all these various meetings. Um, and that could be a debrief through something in writing that is coordinated even with the staff who also attended because the staff is going to hear data. And oftentimes the counselor listening to it's going to hear little nuggets of things. They, there is a lot of background material that takes forever, but they're going to get something that, ooh, this is really of importance to the city. This, this is an opportunity. So that particular gap piece, um, I would like to definitely see you uh to add. And then periodic study sessions where from the study sessions is where we as a group uh put together our thoughts about what the policy is. That in turn then turns into the goal setting. But by the time we get to goal setting, um, as we've experienced it, uh probably far less time uh put on policy uh to then say, oh, okay, then this initiative arises from that. Let me just say one more thing, and that is that um uh, and I've enjoyed this very much, but uh it needs to be understood that the mayor does appoint some people. So uh I was the representative for MPAC, uh, and I followed behind Jeff Goodman, uh, who to this day goes to MPAC. MPAC is losing a lot of its um uh participation. They call it modernization, but from MPAC, the other, and I didn't believe, Mr. Plonie, that you emphasized this and would like to see you emphasize this, that the city-county is really with what they call C four. And C, and C four, and, and it's very rare. I'm really sorry that this came up about the Oglo Bridge. It is extremely rare. Uh, anybody on any of these places has uh you to give your opinion or blah, 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 or how is your, you know, how is your daughter, that kind of thing, that, but so, vote. Vote. C four then has a four metro. Uh, and I was on both of those. It is out of C four that a person is elected by that group to go on J PAC. J PAC will remain a very influential committee to try to get us transportation. Uh, so if the uh Wilson uh charter, uh Mayor Knapp of Wilsonville, who has been the J PAC um member for a very long time, will not be able to go forward. And I was the alternate to that, but that's a very important uh committee in that that's where you sit next to TriMet and elbow Doug Kelsey. So the long and the short of all that is that the point is not to do any of send to kind of hear and feel and get rumors the city. And uh I think it's a great opportunity, um, but it's also great peril if we don't participate. And possibly down the road, uh, as the city manager works up this coordination with her staff, um, that we consider getting a government affairs person or a public affairs person who can help uh manage all uh the various uh activities going on around us. In the words of Council Ramad, I, and I do agree with this. You're either at the table or you're on the menu. And I do agree with that. So those were my, those were my long thoughts and I'll be nice and quiet the rest of the time. But this was my thing. These were my committees.
Other comments? Councilor Winland?
You say that with such enthusiasm. Uh, no, uh, great job, Jordan. I think this is really kind of um encapsulates everything that is outside of our purview as counselors that goes around us. And I think it's important that we connect all the dots. Uh, and I appreciate uh the city council um role as being the ultimate um decision-maker in all this. But the C M O has to coordinate it. Um, and I agree with that. Uh, the one thing that I think would be helpful somehow is that you bring up a lot of really good points here that um the average person looking at city council does not know all the things that we are interconnected with from a staff level and also from a council level. And I think it would be really helpful for me as a counselor, and I'm sure as a citizen, to know who is attached to what. Um, in other words, uh, I mean, we kind of know our assignments as city counselors to what committees. I don't know if we've got a specific list that shows all this, the counselors assigned and then all the staff members that are assigned to all the outside work that we do, which I think would be telling for how much interconnectedness and important uh sort of web, how, how we're all kind of um entangled together.
Uh, Councilor Winland, you do have a list, you do have a list of the assignments of various counselors to committees and boards and that kind of stuff. Not necessarily of the staff.
It, it what? Well.
So we actually did, we actually did a map of all the relationships that the city has and who's the lead on them. And we can send it to you. It's really extensive and in some cases a little weedy, right? It's i- in some cases, uh, you know, it's uh people who are coordinating with soil and water conservation district folks or people. So we'll send it to you. You can see it. It's um, and you'll also see in places where we think we're doing a great job and other places where we think we need a higher level of coordination.
Right, but I guess my point is, is that I don't think it's visible unless it's deeps. I mean, it, I think it should be a more visible list is what I'm saying. Um, once it's put together, um, I just think it would help the everybody on council cause it's frankly, the other part that I love about this is reporting back as counselors or staff members, what's happening with, with three, you know, they sit at the meetings and as Councilor Kohoff said, what are the nuggets that we need to bring back for input from the, the council? Because I, I agree a hundred percent with this, that council um representation has to go out and represent council and not their viewpoint, although we know from our previous agenda item that we all have biases. So um whether that's truly represented or not, who knows? But uh I do know that it's important for us to be uh speaking as one. Um, so anyway, but great job. And I think you'll survive your first city council meeting, Jordan, with, with great style. So, and thanks for being here.
Councilor Lamont?
Thank you. So uh Martha, Megan and Jordan, great work. I think this is something we've needed. It's teed up. I'm going to support it and I'll make the motion when we're ready. I think two things. One is that it empowers our staff to get out beyond the city boundaries, to get involved and find opportunities and grants that could help us, but also things that might hurt us. So that way we more enthusiastically get our staff out there. I think Scott Siegel on the H B two thousand one is a great example. He's finding all kinds of things out, either pro or con about this, and he's allowed to participate to give city direction. Uh, on the other side of the coin, as far as counselors, we already have made the motion, so to speak, for our counselors to report back to the council when there's some media information from our boards and, and commissions. We need to do it more for the external groups. And then we need to give direction to our liaison to make sure that we are speaking the right thing when we do sit around those tables. And it can be frustrating. I've been there. We're saying, oh, they are into a subject, but we don't have a position yet. Well, then we come back and say, where do we want to go? So I think this formalizes it. I think it's great work. And Jordan, last question, uh, how long is your internship? I hope it's more than three months.
It is three months. I've, I'm one-third through. Yeah.
Oh, let's add a year to that.
Other questions or comments? Council Win?
Again, Jordan, excellent job on this. Um, I just wanted to ask you, um, so as far as uh directing staff to come back with that, with a policy, some things I'd like to kind of uh have more clarity on is um just the, the difference between maintaining relations and represent, representing the council and uh, and the city manager's office here. So I think it would be helpful if we were to kind of define, you know, in, in who is actually, so they're just observant to maintain relations, you know, so as a city, you know, having staff, maybe I, I'm envisioning that might be staff. And then um when it comes to uh opportunities for us to be able to uh offer an opinion on behalf of council, I think that needs to be delivered, you know, um, with some, whether with coming by a letter or something, just so that uh we don't send a counselor or somebody from the city manager's office in there, um, you know, without uh, you know, knowing that we've got their back. Cause I think that'd be very important. I think we've um learned over the past that I think that uh just having that ability to, to have, you know, a document hand saying, hey, this is, you know, I come representing council and here's two sentences that reflect the council's position on, on A, B, C issue. So I think that if we can um uh kind of think more about how do we uh define maintaining relations and, and actually representing positions, um, that would be helpful. And what mechanisms that would, that would uh, that would take. So um, those are my brief comments. So.
I would uh, I, my only problem, Mr. Parente, is uh I think in spots from the uh your writing that it wasn't clear that the council was the one that was supposed to be sending delegates. I look, for example, the federal policy, the second paragraph, it says, the C M O will coordinate with local government partners and assign a delegate, designate to represent the city's position. I would have thought that's something that if we needed, the council would appoint somebody. So I, I'm, I'm trying not to be overly sensitive, but I, I think we're still trying to be clear that council has that uh say on what our policy is regionally and federally and that kind of thing.
The, the intent was to, to remain the policy appointees, uh, you know, of the city managers, uh, out of the council, um, the mayor council and the technical uh piece, the appointees, the staff to support the decisions uh going forward to, to do the staff work.
I agree that that's what it should be. I'm, what I'm saying is I'm not sure it's as clear as it could be.
Yeah, if you guys want to proceed, we're going to clean that up. I mean, I've, I've heard one, two, three, four, five of you say that. So I think we'll clean it up to make sure that the distinction between the policy position and the execution and coordination function that's done by staff is really, really clear.
Okay. Counselor Kohoff?
Just uh one more thing. Uh, the report talks about uh the L O C and, and N L C. Uh, the L O C has opportunities for people to simply uh volunteer on multiple committees. And those are a lot more uh study sessions than anything else. And you actually should be canonized if you've been on one of those because they, they were just, they're amazing. Uh, the, the National League of Cities, uh, but also the League of Cities is best in terms of its uh trainings. And so even, I, I mean, I don't know what to say about their lobbying uh one way or the other. I talked with a city manager and she pointed out that uh League of Cities can carry a lot of weight uh and ninety percent of the time we would agree with them. Um, so we'll be working through that ten percent. But, but my point being that those are volunteered by uh various people that want to join and, and participate. And there, you are selected, but you, you're going to get on because they're so difficult that you're.
So let, let me ask a question about that, counselor, because it's been my experience that during the legislative session, the league frequently sends out um requests that we contact our local legislators to support a particular position. And my assumption would be, and I haven't been through a long session with you all yet, that unless it's contrary to some other adopted city council policy, we would, we would, we would do that. And we would find whoever the most appropriate person in the manager's office would coordinate, uh, whoever the most appropriate person was, whether it was the mayor or a member of the council or whether it was a department director, we would have that person actually. Megan, sometimes on H R issues, be the person who reached out to the legislator to say, we would like you to take this position on this bill. And that we would follow the league's guidance unless we have an inclination that the city's position isn't consistent with the league's position. Is that how we do it here?
Uh, that may be, that's, that's a different issue. That's the lobbying part. What I was referring to is the baking of policy.
Yeah, the policy committee is you and I both serve on one and it is a laborer.
And so in that regard, that's just you volunteering and them saying, yes, come, do it. And there are others that where you apply uh to be on there. But, but it's not so much making policy as much as just learning, you know? I think sometimes you're expected to be a, a fixture there and God forbid that you talk. Um, but the point being that there's plenty of ways that we can um, we can impact policy. And like I said, from my perspective, the gap was we don't bring that information back and that needs to be turned around. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Um, Mr. Parente, your term as, as intern ends when? I'm muted.
Sometime in September, I believe.
Okay, well, you've got, you, you should be able to finish it by then. And you'd be, be present when we bring it back to council, right? Super.
Right. I will, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on it. Okay, unless we have any other questions, we'll go on to the next item of business. And again, Mr. Parente, thank you very much.
Do we need a motion?
No, because we're going to come back with, in, uh, later on with it.
Okay.
All right, next item of business is uh House Bill two thousand one, update and grant acceptance. Is Mr. Siegel going to be presenting on that?
Hello, Mayor, city counselors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. I was just admitted to the meeting, so thank you for allowing access.
Wilson, you're muted now. Did you know that?
Am I muted?
No, Mr. Wilson, Eric is.
Yeah, Mr. Wilson will be presenting to you this afternoon. I just wanted to give a, a brief introduction. Now, this is in follow-up to the council's initiative that the city would work towards compliance with House Bill two thousand. In follow-up to the council's initiative that the city would work towards compliance with House Bill two thousand one. Uh, we've been out doing intergovernmental coordination and tracking, uh, the state rulemaking process. We've also. We've also been fortunate in, in receiving a state grant and that's what Eric is here to talk with you about. The reason this is time sensitive is that the state rulemaking process is at a point where the city really can't have input. And to an miracle, highlight a few areas that we've been tracking that we would appreciate your feedback on. So with that, Merrill. Hand it off to Senior Planner Olson. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with a presentation I have for you all. And can everybody see that?
Yes.
And so as Scott mentioned, um, I'm here for two reasons. I guess first of all, good afternoon, uh, Mayor and, and all the counselors. Um, you know, I'm really here for two reasons, to, uh, give you a little bit of an update on. Progress related to the grant, uh, that we applied for from DLCD to work on some. Uh, work to, you know, lots of work, I guess, related to complying with House Bill two thousand one. And also to give you an update on the rulemaking activity that has been occurring at the state level. Um, so that you're aware of what's going on there. And it's also one of the. One of the last opportunities, I think, that we'll have to weigh in on some of the rulemaking activity prior to the recommendations sort of being solidified. Um, by those committees. So just to touch base, I think on a little bit on the grant work, uh, prior to getting into the rulemaking. Um, the, the, uh, grant that we had, um, submitted to DLCD was approved by DLCD. And we were able to work to develop a, um, agreement that is currently, um, at city council, um, awaiting signature. Um, we've also initiated, uh, a request for proposals process for a consultant to conduct the work. Um, that we, um, have agreed to, to work on through this DLCD grant. Um, the grant, or I'm sorry, the RP was actually published yesterday. Um, responses are due, um, by the thirty first of this month and we hope to have a consultant selected by early September. Um, so just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on that. Um, in terms of the grant funded work, we spoke about this, um, with council previously, but. As a reminder, uh, we would start seeing some work products by about, um. Either late November or December of this year, but, um, all the work, um, should be finalized by the end of May, um, twenty twenty one. Um, and we're really, you know, using this work to write, uh, a factual base of information about. Neighborhood development patterns as well as what we really need to do within the code to comply with HB two thousand one. And, um, that would, you know, serve as a base of information for community planning process that would follow. Um, beginning, um, in about June of twenty twenty one and going, um, through twenty twenty two. And that, you know, we would intend to adopt something compliant with HB two thousand one by June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Um, otherwise the model code would be applied directly to the city. So in terms of the rulemaking, I think there's been a little bit more of, uh, substantive, uh, activity going on there. Um, you know, we really haven't talked too much about this, um, at the city council thus far and. Um, that's largely because the conversations have been moving relatively slowly. Um, a lot of the early conversations. Were primarily focused on medium sized cities and the requirements related to duplexes, which, um. You know, are the only type of middle housing that would apply to those medium sized cities as defined by the bill. Um, so that, um, you know, a lot of the regulations I would apply to duplexes were. Um, solidified through that medium cities conversation and just recently, uh, conversation, conversations have shifted to what are called large and metro cities. Under the language in the bill and that would include, uh, Lake Oswego. And so in large and metro cities, triplexes, quadplexes, um, townhouses and cottage clusters. Um, are allowed in areas zone for single family residential use and. There's been a lot of discussion about what exactly that means that in areas language. Um, I think, you know, there's still a lot of conversation at the rulemaking committees about this question. Um, there is a general agreement that these, um, what we're calling higher middle housing types, basically middle housing other than duplexes. Um, there's a general agreement that that would not be required on a lot by lot basis. And there is, you know, some, somewhat of an assumption that duplexes, um, would be allowed, um, on a lot by lot basis. So. There is some agreement that it would not be allowed on a lot by lot basis, but other than that. Um, there's a lot of sort of questions that are still being discussed. So this is a good time to sort of weigh in with comments or concerns if city council does have them. In terms of the conversation at DLCD, they proposed two, um, general theories to how to define. The areas where this higher middle housing would, um, be allowed. Or where it must be permitted within certain jurisdictions rather. Um, they sort of define these as the whittle and balloon approaches. The whittle approach is one that they've been talking, I think, the most about, it's safe to say. And that one sort of begins with an assumption that this higher middle housing would be allowed in all existing areas. Zone for single family residential use and then would sort of apply exemptions locally. Where it would not be permitted or sort of whittled away, if you will. Um, and I think the two sort of big ideas that they presented there was that. Middle housing would not be, um, permitted in areas that contained, um, sensitive resources protected under statewide planning goals. Or, um, where there was infrastructure related constraints. Um, and so that's kind of the two areas that could be whittled away from this larger landscape. The balloon theory would more kind of look at areas that would be suitable for middle housing, um, based on locational criteria and proximity to. Urban services, existing urban centers, unemployment areas, things of that nature. Um, you know, I think this is still kind of being discussed. Generally, there are certain folks. That have really weighed in and said that they don't really agree with any of those, um, or either the whittle or the balloon theory and there's kind of other alternative. Theories being proposed. It's still kind of an active discussion at these committees. Um, but one thing that seems to be a, agreed upon at least, I think a minimum is that. There should be an ability for jurisdictions to limit this higher middle housing in areas with either constrained infrastructure or. Um, resources protected under statewide planning goals. And I think it's just really important to, to point out really quick that the way, um, DLCD is really envisioning. Um, this constrained infrastructure definition would be fairly loose. Um, you know, they had other, uh, definitions for infrastructure deficiencies that were relevant to. Um, the sort of, uh, time extension that could be granted based on infrastructure deficiencies in the process that was set up for that. Um, but that was a pretty strict definition for, you know, cities to be able to meet the threshold of saying that they had a deficient. Um, infrastructure in a certain area, whereas this would be a little bit more, um. Flexible for jurisdictions to define that on their own. Um, DLCD did offer some. Examples such as unpaved streets, areas with unpaved streets might not be appropriate for higher middle housing. Or areas without water or sewer lines. We're giving us some examples of infrastructure constrained areas. Um, and so there's also the sort of goal protected resource language in there and just to clarify what that would refer to. Um, you know, there's different organ statewide planning goals, um, particularly goal five and goal seven. That protects, uh, a number of resources, including, you know, riparian corridors and wetlands. Um, buildings that are on historic register, wildlife habitat, um, scenic areas of different types. Um, wilderness areas, cultural resources, et cetera. Um, also area, areas that are subject to, uh, natural hazards such as flooding, um, landslides, earthquakes, wildfires, et cetera. Um, and there's other resources protected, um, such as agricultural areas, forest lands and a number of other things within the statewide planning goals. So. That does, at least based on the current conversation, seem to allow, um, some flexibility for jurisdictions to regulate the location of middle housing based on. Those protected resources. Um, further, they actually noted in these meetings, DLCD noted that. Um, they saw a need to accommodate potentially unanticipated circumstances. Where middle housing might not be appropriate in a particular area and they actually offered an example of the. Um, areas that they're looking at in Portland related to the residential infill project, as they've called it in Portland. But areas adjacent to the airport where, um, there's an existing sort of federal, um, sort of prohibition on additional density. And so that was something that maybe DLCD couldn't have anticipated, but they do want to incorporate, um. The ability for jurisdictions to identify something that had not already been identified that they might not have predicted and to allow for, for that in some way. So it is a new proposal, um, I'm sorry, I'll keep going here. Um. So I guess that about covers the in areas conversation. Again, it's fairly, um, fairly broad at this point. I think there. There's still a lot of conversation that's going to take place at the committees, but it is a good time to weigh in with any thoughts and comments. Um, another thing that I, I thought was important to bring to your attention was some changes in the proposed. Minimum requirements related to minimum lot size. Uh, this is somewhat of a new change. Um, DLCD staff is now, um, proposing that triplexes and quadplexes would be. Um, basically that jurisdictions would need to allow triplexes and quadplexes on lots that are currently zoned for single family use. Um, so as I mentioned before, sort of the conversation about medium sized cities had been talking about. You know, this duplex idea on that lot, lot by lot basis. Um, and now I think. The proposal from DLCD would open that up to triplexes and quadplexes for large and metro cities. Um, and this is fairly different again than what they had proposed before. And they made this recommendation based on an economic feasibility analysis conducted by Eco Northwest. And, um, it might be, you know, somewhat of a, an obvious conclusion, but they did find that. Um, these higher minimum, uh, lot sizes for triplexes and quadplexes would reduce the costs. Um, of developing them and increase their feasibility. Um, so for that reason, DLCD has recommended this, though there's, um, you know, a lot of discussions still, I would say about this at the rulemaking committees and. Um, it, it probably is worth noting that this actually didn't come out of the rulemaking committees. This was a recommendation largely from DLCD. So we'll see, you know, the, the way this, um, or sort of what the trajectory is of this particular. Uh, limitation or this particular recommendation for minimum lot size. Um, I think one thing I would just point out is that, you know, if, if this decision does stick, there's still. Um, this sort of other language that we were referring to before about the areas where middle housing would be. Um, allowed where, you know, there would be additional flexibility for, um. The city to determine the appropriate locations for middle housing, even though. Minimum lot size might not be the way to regulate that. So, um, there would be other mechanisms that the city could, um, use to determine where it would be most appropriate. Um, though this proposal would really expand the overall landscape of lots where middle housing could be. Uh, located in the city. So that's something that we wanted to bring to your attention. And the last thing I wanted to speak about is just the, um, current proposal as it relates to minimum off-street parking requirements. Uh, the proposed minimum requirements for parking spaces would. Be based on a sort of one space per unit concept. Um, so it would be, uh, two, two spaces for duplexes. Um, I guess the best way to explain this is that jurisdictions would not be able to require more than two spaces for duplex. Um, and they would not be able to require more than three for a triplex, four for a quadplex, et cetera. So that's kind of what the current proposal is and this is fairly similar to what we have in Lake Oswego currently where we do, um. Require one space per unit for single family and duplexes. Um, though we wanted to point out that it would be different than what's required for certain multifamily developments. Where we, um, we base parking requirements on unit type, so, um, one space. Uh, per studio apartment, um, you know, more spaces for a one bedroom, more spaces for a two bedroom, more like one point two five. Um, and one point five for a two bedroom. So, um, it does have, you know, slightly more, uh, parking required for certain types of units and multifamily. Um, so that is one thing that we wanted to point out as well. Otherwise, I think that about concludes my presentation. So just be open to questions.
And from you. Um, Mr. Olson, can you take screen sharing off now? Thank you.
Uh, Eric and Scott, what hinders a neighborhood from creating CCNRs if they don't have CCNRs? Uh, that would not allow, uh. Duplexes, triplexes.
There's actually language in the House Bill two thousand one, the, the bill itself. That would preclude those covenants that restrict middle housing.
No, let, let me, all right, so you have a neighborhood that has very strong CCNRs that would not allow it. You have a neighboring neighborhood that was built in the thirties. It has no CCNRs. But that neighborhood, as we have in Lake Oswego, has a strong neighborhood. Uh, group and they get together, hire a lawyer, rewrite their CCNRs, get everyone to sign off. Um, they can do that without the city, right?
Yeah, Counselor O'Neill, you know, property owners can organize and, and create restrictive covenants. All on their own. Unfortunately, I guess in that example, the state legislature preempted that for, for covenants that would, would be adopted after the date. After the effective date of the bill. So for covenant CCNRs that existed before the bill, those remain unaffected.
So then that neighborhood could sue the state saying that my neighbors, you know, down the street. Have a restriction that you're now not allowing me to have. They'd have a pretty good legal argument, would, would they not?
No.
David Powell question.
Well, I would, would want to make any pronouncements about that at the, at the hearing here. I think there. Would have to go through sort of an equal protection analysis. It would not be a suspect classification, so there. Have to only be a rational basis for the state to make that kind of a distinction and going forward. So I, uh, but other legal opinions I might want to present to the council in a different forum than this, but it's an interesting question.
Thanks, Mr. Paul. Counselor Lamont.
Um, my question revolves around when we suspect we're going to see resolutions to this issue. You may have. Uh, mentioned that and when we might begin to see development. Based on these decisions. Do we have a crystal ball on that one?
Yeah, you know, there is a deadline of, um, by the end of this year for them to come up with the minimum requirements and they have set. Um, you know, their own internal deadlines much more aggressive than that and they would, um, see November as. When they, I think the last month that they would anticipate that LCDC would be considering, um, the recommendations from the rulemaking committee. So. I think we'll know well before then in terms of what's being recommended. Um, however. You know, you, you can't necessarily predict the way that the conversations at the development commission will go. Um, so, you know, I think, uh, that's one piece of that. And in terms of when we would see effects based on this legislation, you know. We aren't required to adopt anything until June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Um, so, you know, I think that we would probably, um, need a good amount of time to, to consider which, uh, amendments or, you know. Changes to the code or comp plan we would recommend to comply. Um, but it wouldn't, you know, be more than a few months, I would imagine, prior to that June thirtieth, twenty twenty two date. So. Let's say, um, you know, we're kind of aiming for March or April of twenty twenty two. Um, and yeah, I think after that would pass, you know, it would take a little bit to get actually adopted and then, you know, the. Development would probably not start for another, you know, unanticipated period of time, but you know, they would. Um, I think broadly the expectations are that there won't be a huge flood of development once these regulations get passed, that it doesn't. Um, that they don't see a huge influx of applications coming in necessarily due to this. Um, but there are other assumptions about the amount of growth that is anticipated, um, once we do adopt amendments.
And if I may quickly, I have a follow-up question for, um, Director Siegel. Uh, this means then that we will need to revamp or revisit our comp plan as well as our, um. Permitting regulations or, or this sounds like quite an involved process on the city side.
It, it is an involved process. It's a community planning process and the comp plan has language in it that. Is probably contrary to the bill in some respects and that's really why, uh, we'd like to have an outside. The, uh, third party consultant take, take a, an objective look at our comp plan and our code and. And, and, and give some input. They wouldn't be making recommendations. To council be until, you know, we had gone through a community planning process, uh, locally. Uh, but, you know, we're anticipating that there will be changes to the comp plan as well as the code.
Thank you. Um, I see to Counselor Kohlhaas.
I was just, uh, I don't know if, uh, Director Siegel was there, but I thought I saw his name. Uh, the home builders and metro put on, uh, a webinar, I think it was last week about this housing. Uh, middle housing and it was so interesting because, uh. They said that the first hundred square feet cost about fifteen hundred dollars and then as you go. And then as you go to 800 square feet was the first place where it was, I thought it was a little under $300. It worked out to average of $300 of the square feet. So these little houses per se are really for supply only. And the other thing that was tremendously interesting was about the parking wars that are gonna be out there. And that they were very clear that the, that, let's say that we have a fourplex and you have four people. They're not necessarily family. They all have cars. You only have one on, off-street parking space, so you spill out all over the neighborhood. And at the present time, they said, you know, really, if somebody doesn't like that, then they're gonna move into one of those places. But on the other hand, here that poor devil down the street who's living wherever this occurs, that's gonna be, it's gonna be the parking wars. But those were the two, they were beautiful houses, I'll say that, but they didn't, as Director, I think it was Director Siegel said that, they're not anytime soon gonna rush in here and start building like crazy for, for various reasons.
Also, one, you got a question or statement?
Two questions. What's the cost of the consultant you project? And also, how much of the code do you think this is going to affect? Like 10%, 25%, I mean percent, when we get down to this? I mean, this is, this sounds like a big job.
Yeah, so the consultant, we haven't gone through the procurement process yet, but we have, the grant is a $45,000 grant, and the match that we have budgeted, that we've programmed into the Planning Department, or long-range planning is up to $20,000. So potentially, you know, potentially the city's expend, expenditure would be up to $20,000, but the state is contributing most of the funds. And as far as how much, yeah, as far as how much of the code, it's really a function of how mu, how many design controls, you know, the city is wanting to put on middle housing and you know, we'll go through the code and make sure that it's set up correctly to do that. It could be, you know, it'll be a significant effort. The last, the last major overhaul of the code that the city did for housing was the update for Clear and Objective Housing Standards in 2016. And, and that, you know, the volume of that was, was significant. Councilor Lamont may recall from tenure on the Planning Commission, it was a lot of work, and so that's why we really need to make sure we're taking the time to study this, to look at the neighborhood development patterns, and then to involve the community in a discussion, because it'll take time for people just to understand what are they requiring, what is middle housing, what does the state absolutely require, what, you know, what are our options? And so then the code writing is, you know, we need to make sure we're taking the time to go through that so that people can participate and they understand what's proposed.
And so the last question then, when you talked, Eric, about, I don't know, the bubble and the whittle, or whatever the terminology was, the last time you updated us, they were looking at maybe, maybe Lake Oswego designating high corridor, high-traffic corridor areas to put the density in, and we could maybe earmark parts of, of Lake Oswego to do that, but you're saying now there may not be support for that?
I think that's accurate. I think that generally, folks at the state were wanting to give jurisdictions more flexibility ultimately. So I think that if they're to say, well, you can only really allow middle housing within a one-mile or whatever half-mile radius of an existing transit corridor, you know, you know, it would kind of be really kind of placing a lot of limits on where, where they could, you know, be providing that infrastructure and you know, I think that's one reason that they were opting for more flexibility. You know, I think there is, of course, you know, a question of whether jurisdictions could look at things a little bit more like that and try to encourage more middle housing in those areas as opposed to others. But, you know, I think, as I mentioned before, it's also very much still up in the air, and there's a lot of different theories on where things should or could be allowed. And yeah, I think just one other thing to mention is that folks did mention a few times that, you know, one thing that they had concerns about with the transit lines, in particular locating, you know, doing zoning based on the location of transit lines, that transit lines do change over time and need to be modified based on things that don't always relate to land use planning and might not have the same type of thought around them, I guess. So I think, you know, there is some concern about having to go through every time a transit line changes and, and change zoning accordingly. So I think those were, that was just another thing that was mentioned at the state.
Thank you.
Councilor Lamont.
I think first, Martha and Scott and Eric, this is great work. We, it's reiterating what we just talked about as our policy for external relations. To be at the table, to be our eyes and our ears and our voice is, is important on this critical piece of legislation. My first question is more of down the pipe when we start doing process. I think this is one that we really need to engage the neighborhood chairs and the homeowner association presidents. And, you know, maybe a few here, a few there, as far as getting in a group, that's fine, but I think they all need to be engaged in this. Because this could come at us really heavy. So when we get to that point of process, let's, let's work with the neighborhood chairs group and all the HOA presidents. The second thing is, we talked a little bit about this, and Eric, I don't know if you're looking for input now, but when they said there could be areas, not all single-family, we have to be careful of that, because who are we gonna choose? And how are we gonna choose? And how are we gonna say, one neighborhood, you don't have to have this, but the other neighborhood gets? That is so unfair, but we gotta be really careful with that. And then the third thing, if you can clarify the lot size, if I got this right, DLCD was saying single-family lots today could handle a duplex. You can kind of understand that. But then when you go triplex and quad, quadriplex and townhomes, you still can jam that into a single-family lot. And then Eco Northwest said, no, maybe the, the bigger lots are better. I was just clarify what we're, what we're up against there.
Yeah, so, yeah, I apologize if it wasn't clear, but your understanding that essentially where they had said duplexes would be allowed on the, an existing lot where a single-family residence would be allowed has been expanded recently to apply to triplexes and quadplexes, so that quadplexes would be allowed on lots where today a single-family residence would only be allowed based on minimum lot size.
Well, well, that, that one is huge. Because if you have to have four units with four driveways, four garages, four kitchens, four rec rooms, et cetera, and they're gonna put that on one of our single-family lots, that is unfair. So if you need more input from us to say to them, that doesn't work, and Scott, I like how you're going through this to say, here's our bulk standards, and here's what doesn't or doesn't work. I just, what, what kind of direction or, or policy statement do you need? At this stage.
If I may, Mayor, that's a really important point, and, and so far, we, we have not heard from the rulemaking committees or, or DLCD staff that they're looking to direct cities to change their, to change our lot coverage or setbacks or other development standards. So our understanding up to this point is if the minimum lot area for a duplex is the same as for a single-family home, you know, that project still has to comply with all, would have to comply with all the city's development standards. It may be that you're not even, even able to get that duplex on, you know, on that 6,000 square foot lot or 7,500 square foot lot. But this recent turn of, you know, in, in the discussion around the upper-level housing, the triplex and quadplexes, and considering allowing those on, on, on existing single-family lots, that I, that I think, you know, if that's something that the, that the council had some feedback or direction on, we could, we could take it back. I think it's I, it, it seems like it's scope creep a little bit on what the legislation had originally set out. But, you know, at one point, they were talking about a duplex on an existing lot, fine. If you go to triplex, they're going to use the density calculation as if it were a duplex. So if you have a 5,000 square foot lot in Portland, that they're allowing a duplex on, then you would be, basically, the density would be 2,500 square feet per unit. So a triplex would be 7,500, a quad would be 10,000, and so on. That seemed like it had more rational sense to it, but, you know, it remains to be seen whether the, the committee or, or the commission will go along with this recommendation that the staff have proposed to DLCD, but it's something, you know, we, we've been looking at it and we this would be the time to make some comment on it if the commi, council had any feedback.
Well, there's motion here to approve the grant agreement with DLCD for HB 2001 Planning Assistance. Motion is to direct the city manager to sign the agreement, and I'll make that.
Second.
Let's have one second.
One second.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on this? Would you call?
Councilor Wendlin.
I'm sorry, Councilor Wendlin, go ahead.
Well, are you asking for feedback that I would say, from my perspective, I would not like to have triplexes and fourplexes and townhouses, townhomes. I mean, I'm not really I understand that, but I'm just, before you close it all up, I don't know when you're gonna ask for input on this, but that would be.
We'll be asking for input on it. I think most people, most council shares your opinion.
When it's appropriate, okay.
So would you, any other, any other? Yes, Councilor Lamont.
So Scott, if I have this right while we're discussing this, if we have our bulk standards today, which we tweak every year, getting regulations cleaned up and clear and objective, but we say, hey, we like our bulk standards. You get your setbacks, you got your buildable area, and that's that. And if a fourplex or townhouses or whatever is not gonna fit in that, when you, at the end of the day, are we okay? Are they gonna come back and say, no, you will make it fit, and you will expand that buildable area? That's the question I'm, I'm struggling with there.
Yeah, that's, that isn't what we've been hearing. They're not moving in that direction, but if, yeah, if you, if you have any other feedback after taking action on the grant, that would be helpful to get that input. Thanks.
Okay. I don't record. Will, will you call the role, please?
First, Mayor Stu Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Lamont.
Yes.
Wendlin.
Yes.
Mans.
Yes.
Koho.
Yes.
Wen.
Yes.
And O'Neill.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, the next, next item on our agenda is community policing in Lake Oswego.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and I believe our
So wait, 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 before you leave that item, I guess I, I understand your honor, your desire to move on, but if we are gonna send comments to the rulemaking, we have to do it by the end of the month. Is that correct, Scott? So if you do have anything as a city council you want to share with the rulemaking committee, you gotta do it now.
Okay, well, I think it's clear that we did not want to force triplexes and quadplexes on lots that wouldn't accommodate them.
I'm gonna ask Erica a question, because I'm wondering about that. I mean, it seems to me the way the rulemaking is going is where triplexes and quadplexes are gonna be allowed is on large lots. So we'd essentially be saying duplexes everywhere and triplexes and quadplexes on the R10 and R15 lots. That's what we're talking about, right? So those are the neighborhoods we're sending triplexes and quads into.
The, the current way that they, so that was kind of, I guess, one thing I would start with is I would all be kind of based on a ratio of the existing minimum lot size for a single-family unit. So it wouldn't necessarily matter if it was a R15, or 10, or 5. You know, it's, it's based on the ratio of where single families allowed. So it would be allowing, you know, up to four units on lots in any of the zones that allow single-family today. And, you know, I think that the clarification that Scott offered is important, though, is that the bulk regulations, the state isn't really proposing or mandating that cities, you know, adjust their bulk regulations to be more accommodating for those types. So it would be kind of an assumption that, you know, a fourplex, for instance, or a quadplex would be able to fit within the same envelope that currently we require for a single-family dwelling or, you know, a single-family ADU, I guess.
So you look at set-asides and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so that looks at, you know, block coverage, setbacks, square footage. You know, I think a lot of that stuff is not really included in this particular discussion about minimum lot size. It's just kind of related to, you know, the universe really of lots where triplexes and fourplexes would be allowed, whether or not that's, you know, feasible or possible, I think, is a more nuanced discussion, and up to the city's kind of discretion as to, you know, how much the city would want them to be allowed.
Officer Wendlin.
Well, I would propose that we, I like the, the bubble thing, whether they like it or not. I would support that. What?
The balloon.
Oh, the balloon, sorry, the balloon theory. Where we would have, my opinion would be to have input, local input, as to where we would put triplexes and fourplexes and townhouses versus if we have to live with the duplex, I suppose I can live with that, but I, I'm not in support of being able to put one of those townhouse complex on a, somebody who happens to have a large lot in the middle of a single-use or single-family dwelling neighborhood. I mean, people are gonna go nuts. So, anyway, that's just my opinion.
From you.
Eric and Scott, I mean, really what this is, is a bill that wants to increase population in cities. Why was it written the way it was written? I think personally, it was poorly written. I think it would have been a better written bill if it just went to a city and said, we'd like you to increase your population by 10%. You figure it out, which, for one, tri, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes in Lake Oswego are gonna be expensive housing. And if they're looking to increase density and increase it with inexpensive housing in Lake Oswego, that's gonna be done with apartment complexes, not with duplexes and triplexes. So why, why was it done the way, or was it, it was written by a person who had no idea about planning? I mean, I know the individual brought it to the house, but why hasn't everyone just said, that's a crazy plan? We, we spend years and years creating these plans for our cities. Why don't you just tell us what your objective is, and then let us figure it out?
Yeah, you know, and I've heard
How difficult it is to deal with the laws it is.
From the speaker and their, and their staff, and I'm sure you've heard the same messaging that it, it's a supply, it's about supply. It's not affordable, affordable housing bill. And in some communities, it may, it may result in that, but it's not likely to result in affordable, you know, quote, affordable housing in Lake Oswego. But I think, you know, it's, it would be reason, I think it would be a reasonable stance to take, or at least a request to, to make that in the rulemaking, to the extent that the state can define the outcomes, what are the outcomes or the metrics that, that they're hoping to achieve? If it is supply, is it a 3%, a 5%, a 10% increase in, in housing in these, in the, you know, the segment of housing that, that they're trying to target? Because then at least we would have a basis for looking at these areas and, and trying to refine our codes so that we still have, you know, the challenge of which areas, and if it's topography or infrastructure or, or other, you know, factors, so we're not, you know, so we're being fair in how it's distributed. I think that's a, that's a comment that we could make with, you know, if that's something that, that you were looking for, some clear direction on the outcomes that they're after, then we'd have a basis for planning.
Yeah.
Urban development, so people have to drive, and if you're looking to truly increase a density, which is what this is, why wouldn't you want that density to be increased where you're creating infrastructure where people can walk and take mass transit? So that would be our two large downtown zones, which would be easier for us to plan for than someone who lives in the Palisades neighborhood at the very top of, you know, Cook's Butte, and they have a quadplex up there. They gotta drive everywhere. That's 12, that's probably minimum eight cars, and maybe as many as 12 if they have kids, so kind of is a plan that works against all of the other planning that we've heard coming out of all the people who like to plan, which is, you know, try to get people around these hubs that have places where they can walk and have mass transit.
Yeah, Mayor, just a couple of things I wanted to add and, and then actually mentioned that the planning commission and their. And the updates they've received and the, the feedback that we've, we've received from the commission. They're, they're concerned about, you know, we've got a lot of narrow streets in Lake Oswego without sidewalks and without on-street parking. And so looking at infrastructure, I think we are going to be looking at those narrower streets without really any parking. And if there's a constraint there, it's something we can focus on. Yeah, so that, that, that was just one point. The other thing is that. Again, I think, you know, the bill has some language in it about, well, assumptions about how much growth would result from this. In terms of looking at urban growth boundaries, and so I think getting some clarity around that would be helpful just so that we're. You know, if it's only a three percent increment of growth, you know, that's not every lot, that's.
And that's it. That's for greenfield development, so I think they're assuming more of a one percent increase for other types of lots.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
One, just a few things to add based on Commissioner O'Neill's comments, if I may. There's just a, just to clarify, you know, I think there are, that, there's that conversation about the balloon versus the whittle. And I think there's other folks particularly from cities such as Beaverton. That, or from Beaverton specifically, that, you know, have been proposing other types of metrics to look at this. And I think, just I want to point out that the state actually is against, I think a lot of the rulemaking committees are against. Using some type of, you know, five percent, ten percent, putting a number on the increase in density or the performance. Of producing middle housing. I think they just didn't want to put something arbitrary out there and that folks thought that that might be arbitrary. But I think this is kind of, the way that they're looking at it would be, you know, are you, are, you know, does your middle housing. Regulation, the areas that you choose, does it. Expand housing options and does it. You know, address some type of disparity in terms of where certain types of housing is located historically. So if you're showing that single family is, you know, it's, we're sort of introducing middle housing where single family is and just kind of. Making an argument without being able to put a certain metric on it. I think that's kind of where the discussion is at. And so there's a lot of specifics that need to be determined, I guess, is, is really what I'm trying to say here. But, but they're thinking about things in a number of different ways, not just the whittle.
Mr. Segal, do you think that we could make parking requirements more stringent on triplexes and duplexes? And still get, and still be okay with that if we're being reasonable about it?
I think based on what we've seen so far, the state is really trying to restrict what additional parking the cities can require. So I think that's one area where they've really dialed in and we're, we're probably not going to be able to require additional parking. Although as Eric pointed out, our current parking code does require. One parking space for, for dwelling unit and, and actually. More than that, when you get up to above, you know, two bedroom apartment, I think we're going to be limited with that for, for middle housing. That's not to stop a developer or builder from providing more, more parking. I mean, they may find that it's just, you know, it's not a marketable unit without, without more parking.
So Eric and Scott get this because I talked about it about a year ago and it, it references Council O'Neill's and Council Wenland's point earlier. Instead of attacking our single family neighborhoods, this should have been oriented towards our commercial corridors. Because many of them are overgrown with too much commercial. And many of them have land that can be converted into housing, but they didn't pay attention to that. They want to go after the single family neighborhoods. And switch it from affordable to density, which makes no sense. But I think if I'm listening to Scott and Eric, the, the horse is out of the barn. We've got to try and do the best we can with this crazy H B two thousand one. To go back and lobby and sway and switch it to get them away from single family neighborhoods and into really up, upping our quarters. I think Route ninety-nine, Route ninety-nine. McLaughlin, Arbun's Ferry, there's plenty of room there to increase density and, and create housing next to bus lines and their shopping. But I guess policy wise, this, this is going down the pipe. We gotta keep reacting. Is that correct, Scott? We can't do a major intervention here. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's right, and really the key issue or decision point right now for, at the state is. Whether they're going to, for those areas with the triplexes, fourplexes and so on. Are they going to prescribe where it is that we're required to allow them, you know, again, subject to all the city's development standards? Or are they going to say it's the universe of single family land? Except for where you tell us, city, that we've got geographic constraints, we have infrastructure constraints, we have protected natural. Sensitive lands, you know, we have the, these areas that, that where it's not suitable. And so that's where we're looking for some feedback. Do you prefer the, I guess the whittling is, that's the whittling and then the former. Which is, you know, where they prescribe it, that's the balloon? Is that right, Eric?
Yeah, I think it's just a more proximity based metric for the balloon. But, you know, I think other, you know, other jurisdictions that have done a lot of work into neighborhood character and analyzing. The different sort of historic development patterns of different neighborhoods have asked for flexibility to say, okay. You know, maybe it makes sense within certain areas of a particular neighborhood based on that fabric and, and not others. So I think there are, you know, there, there are other approaches that I think are gaining momentum, I would say, that should not be sort of dismissed. And I think those are, those have more momentum, I think, than the balloon approach currently because I think. Almost across the board, I think there's some sort of, you know, definitely examples on the contrary. But those areas, existing urban cores and transit corridors all generally allow multifamily already, much less, you know, other types. So I think this is intended, the bill is specifically written to apply where single family residential is currently allowed. And I think, you know, even some of those zones with the multifamily might not actually even allow single family today. So they wouldn't be covered by the bill theoretically.
And a last question, Scott, is. We've got the professional planners from the cities around the table, which is good because you guys have to deal the first line of defense on this. But is there any indication from these meetings and could there be open meetings to let our neighborhood chairs and HOA residents weigh in? To say what it really means from their day-to-day life? Or is it just, we gotta get this technical stuff done and then we move on? I, I didn't think there was a lot of great time for hearings, let alone getting people from the neighborhoods to give input.
Yeah, so the DLCD rulemaking committees are public meetings, they're advertised, they post their agenda packets and materials. They do receive citizen comments at those meetings. And we've, you know, when we've had the opportunity at the planning commission, we've, we've tried to make that known, you know, when neighborhood association chairs. Appear and to let, let them know that there is a process there, there's also a process at the city, you know, community engagement that we'll be doing. You know, to comply with the bill and, and that, that'll have a lot of involvement. But if people want to be involved at the state level, they really need to participate there. And then to the extent the council has direction or feedback for. You know, as part of this process, we can carry that message.
But it sounds to me, Mr. Segal, that most of the counselors would like to take either the balloon or the. Other method, the whittle, whichever would, would, in your opinion or your staff's opinion. Would end up with having the least triplexes and quadplexes in residential neighborhoods. And I, I assume you, that will be evident fairly soon as you, as you get in these meetings.
Yeah, I think, Mayor, I think the city, you know, from the kind of a home rule or city's interest perspective. I think that whichever path they take, and we really need to take a close look at the language, the one that affords the greatest flexibility to the city. Is the one that you would want, I, I'm assuming, I mean, that's what our recommendation would be. So that's how, unless we hear otherwise, that's how we'll proceed, you know, in consultation with Manager Bennett. Making, making the city's position known, you know, so far, like as Eric said, so far there's been very little. Very few flags that have gone up. We've been tracking this, it's been very slow moving. And it's only recently that these, a couple of issues have emerged and, and so, you know, we're ready to respond to that. And it's timely that, you know, that you're getting this update. So we're happy to represent the city in that way with Manager Bennett's concurrence.
Madam Recorder. Ms. Simpson.
Yes, Mayor.
Did we have, we've had a vote on this, did we actually vote on the motion?
Seven zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we're fairly clear. Manager Bennett, is that, are you okay with this?
Yeah, thank you, that's helpful. I think, I'm glad we got closure on that because I would hate to have the deadline missed. And then have you frustrated that we didn't offer comments. And what I'm really hearing is telling the department not to go beyond the scope of the bill. And maximizing local flexibility so that we can implement it in a way that works best for the community. Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, our next area of business is community policing in Lake Oswego.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of council, I, we will be joined here shortly by Chief Dale Jorgensen as well as Charity Taylor. Who've been working with this, on this project with me. As you recall, at the June twenty-third city council meeting, council expressed a strong interest in being closely involved in a community dialogue around policing. Before you is an outline, a high-level proposal of how we think that work can be facilitated in the community. With the focus on determining how we simultaneously address systematic discrimination in policing. While recognizing that police work is important and often can be very difficult. Essentially, there are three main components of the process that we are recommending. The first component is a community kickoff event or launch that would outline the goals and objectives of the process. The city council would have input into how this event would be structured and certainly would be expected to attend. There will be, we will need to do some pre-work with the facilitator. Before we're able to have that community kickoff event to make sure we're super clear about the goals of the projects. We want to make sure that we are meeting the objectives that each of the counselors have as well as collectively. The second component is for a facilitator to engage the community in small group discussions. And it's anticipated that city staff will assist the facilitator in conducting these. However, we will need to rely on the city council to help us get the word out about this opportunity. We have an interest certainly of making sure that we get a diverse viewpoints from all over our community. And that we have the ability to ensure that everyone has the ability to participate to the extent that they'd like to. The third component is for the facilitator to report back to the city council with the data they receive from the focus groups. And begin a discussion with council on next steps. The focus certainly for that third component will be on where do we go from here? What have we heard? Where do we go from here? And so that certainly won't be the end of the work. If anything, that might be the very beginning, once we've had a chance to hear from the community. The exact process and several key details are certainly missing from the staff report and they're still being worked out. And we're in the process of identifying a facilitator. But it was important for us to get in front of the council before your August break to make sure that we are on the target with these preliminary components. Of the process and specifically, I would love to get feedback from the council as to whether you're willing to be available to staff. And or the facilitator during your August break. And, and really to make sure that there's concurrence on the public participation part of the process. That, that we're, we're hitting it accurately where council would like to see that, that dialogue and that engagement. And of course, I certainly want to mention that I appreciate the work of the police department and Chief Jorgensen. And, and working on this outline to the states and he will certainly be a critical component moving forward. As well as Charity Taylor and her experience so far with the D E I task force will be instrumental as well. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions and, and open the floor for discussion.
Questions, Councilman Mans.
Make sure I'm unmuted, yes. My question is this, and let me think about a word this properly. There was some feedback that not including the D E I committee. In our discussion around policing. Was a wrong direction to go. This is either for you, Ms. Phelan, or for Charity. Was your feeling that the D E I committee was intent with the council taking lead on this?
Yes, I, I would say so. We, excuse me, there was discussion at the D I task force meeting shortly after that. Excuse me, June twenty-third meeting. And they, I think they understood the reasoning why this, this would be a topic that would be important for council to keep close to the chest for them. And I didn't get a sense that they felt that that was any indication of council's confidence in their ability to do the work that they're doing. Also, I think too, initially, as you recall, when the task force was established, they had two key focuses to identify barriers to participation on boards and commissions. And also for city recruitments. So the fact that council has already expanded their work quite a bit, I think was sufficient. I, I think they, they appreciated the opportunity to expand as, as we have. And certainly understood the need for this particular topic to be, to be kept at the council level. Charity, feel free to add in.
Thank you, I agree with Assistant City Manager Phelan in that the D I task force definitely understood the immediacy. Of addressing community policing and so they felt perfectly fine with city council taking the lead on that. Given the fact that their report, finalized report won't be coming out until towards the end of the year, so.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Lamont.
This one's for Chief Jorgensen. Now, you talked at the second to last meeting about metrics. And that you were looking at some of the new directions from national standards. When would we get into the discussion or bring metrics to us as far as how many calls you go on and what are the nature of the calls? Is that a separate track or would this be eventually coming out of this process?
Well, I, I think that would be partly up to the council and the direction that. That you kind of formalize in the very first part of this whole discussion. We have numbers, you know, all sorts of numbers that we track and that we can bring. It's just a kind of defining exactly what you want and what you want to see, I think, is more of the discussion.
Well, I, I don't think we have the specifics right now, but I think if we have metrics in one standard year, twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. How many calls we go on, what are the nature, how intense or violent they may or may not be, who's involved? And you, you eloquently talked about, you know, national standards trying to come together for all police departments. So if there's something new coming out of that, I'd like to learn about that. And I think it's really up to you and Assistant Manager and Manager to figure out when statistics or metrics should come to us.
Yeah, I think that would be, that will be played into exactly the, when we get everything kind of worked out as to the goals that the council would like to see. And again, we, we have different data points that we can share at, at certain times, whenever that is.
Great.
Other question, Councilor Koha.
So I have a couple of questions. Is it the thought of the council, however, that the community policing actually revolves around race? And I think that, the reason I say that is that the D E I task force. Included, you know, something like eleven different diversity, equity and inclusion dimensions. And that made sense that they go forward on, you know, the issues that we had given them initially. Regarding commissions and boards where they would get some access to power as well as some access to. To employment, which is a form of power. But the police, and community policing, I think it would be my understanding is race-based. I mean, you're not hearing, or I'm not hearing. Older people saying here in Lake Oswego that they're, you know, being followed by the police or. You know, having microaggressions. But, but it is a question, i- is that the, is that actually the focus of our community policing?
If you're, are you asking staff or are you directing that to your colleagues?
Whoever wants to talk about that because then that solves Councilman Mans's issue, which is why. That, that we've been bombarded with that, like, you know, somehow that was unreasonable. To have taken that away from the task force. But also in addition, are we really focused on, when we talk about community policing, are we focusing on race?
Go ahead, Council Phelan.
As the, as it is set up now, that, yeah, the focus is on systemic racism and policing. But I'm certainly open to council feedback on, on whether that should be. But I'm certainly open to council feedback on, on whether that should be expanded.
Hold on, Councilwoman, I got a couple more and then you swing back. I, I'm fine with that, although I can also make an argument that we should be talking about gender as well in terms of domestic violence. But I have been, I, I, at the moment, the focus is on race. There was a question about the facilitator. I take it that RFPs have gone out and were not talking about to whom they've gone out or, or received back. Am I right on that?
That's correct. Yes, we did put out an RFQ and we have received some proposals that we're currently in the process of evaluating.
Okay. And we'll know about that when we get back from, well, in August, if we commit to having some work done in August or at least September.
Correct.
Would we be able to get some training as a council on this kind of thing? That is another criticism, that we're not really as sharp as, as expected by certain groups. And I don't know that I do have specialty training. Is that a possibility to even have the, something similar, if not identical, to what we did before the boards and commissions?
So we have another RFQ out. Charity is actually taking the lead on this one for, it's tied to the council goal to provide DEI training, not only for the city council, but for the city's executive team, as well as all the boards and commission members. And so she's in the process of soliciting responses back and evaluating them. It would be great if we could somehow time those at the same time, but I'm afraid that, because we have an interest in moving the community policing effort forward, we could talk with the facilitator about potentially doing some training in advance. I do, do believe that the facilitator that we select would then meet with council, councillors one-on-one to get, to make sure we're all clear on what the goals of this community policing work is. Again, that's separate from a training component, but that might allow the facilitator to get a sense of the need for training and what that might look like moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wendland, you have a question?
I guess, yeah, the, from this standpoint of, well, I think we're just in discussion of this topic, not necessarily just only questions, but I'm looking for the whole process. I mean, I, I want the racism obviously addressed, but I think, aren't we looking at the police department as a total to say, hey, what are we doing now? What do we need to be doing? And what are the actions or the policies or directives that we need to put in place to, to be better and to be a better police department moving forward? And so, you know, that is recruitment. I mean, it's policies of our police department. It's, you know, the, the entirety of, of, when we say community policing is a lot different than when we say protecting or whatever. I mean, I, I, there's kind of the vocabulary of police departments now. And I think we tend to be focusing on community policing and community engagement. And are we, I think, I'd like to have that defined and then I'd like to find out then if we're actually doing it. I mean, that's, that's kind of my thing. And, and I think between community input, having the data and figuring out what data we need, setting objectives, figuring out if we have to change policies, we put the plan into place and then we measure those, you know, measure those objectives that we've come out with. I think that's, that's what I would like to see out of this process. And that, you know, I, I personally think we have a, a great police department, but does it have, you know, room to improve? Absolutely. And I think that's kind of where we're, I'm hoping, where we get at the other end of the process, we're a better police department and a better community. And I think, you know, that's, that's where I'm at. And obviously, the hot topic of racism in, in police departments right now is, is a paramount concern. And, you know, we need to figure that part out. But I think we also have other things that we need to look at as far as a, a community to make sure that we're doing the best policing that we possibly can. And that's, that's kind of my objective as a city councillor.
Yes, I'd like to, to leap on to that and maybe add a little bit more definition. I definitely feel that leading with race is a primary function of what we're doing here. But secondly, looking at our police department not as necessarily bettering it, but bringing the idea of policing into a 21st century and beyond situation as our community desires. Because the bottom line is, if our community likes the way that our police operates, then we need to understand that. If there are questions, we need to address those as well. So I see this as kind of a multi-pronged unbundling and that I, I'm trying not to make this sound harsh, but to examine each, not each part, but, but many of the parts of what our police do on a daily basis to better serve our citizens. Did that make sense, I hope?
To an extent, yes.
Thank you.
Charity, Chief Jorgensen, do you have questions of us?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Chief?
No, thank you, but I see Councilor O'Neill has his hand up.
I know, I'll get to him. Councilor O'Neill, it's your turn.
You know, being a long-term resident and a long-term person who drives on our Lake Oswego streets for the last 40 years on a regular basis and having a business where I, in my business, the police are called every once in a while, not that often, but they do because neighbors get in disputes. And I would say since Chief Johnson came on, there's been a noticeable change in Lake Oswego policing from, I would, I would call it policing to see how you can catch the Lake Oswego screwing up to policing nowadays of how can I help people better understand that the mistakes they're making can, you know, harm themselves or others. So, and I think Chief Jorgensen has definitely taken that legacy from Chief Johnson. I think if I was to look at the police department, they probably do not ring their bell as much as they should for all the good things they are doing. I don't think our citizens understand what a job they do for us on a daily basis. So if there was anything, I would say is we need to do more of what we're already doing well. Yes, in any business, there's always time to improve. I don't want us to dwell on issues that happened 25 years ago to some individual that just keeps bringing it up on and on and on and on. If there's issues that have happened in the last six months or the last two weeks that we feel are inappropriate, those are the things we should be working on. So I think we brought that up earlier in the DEI discussion to get relative, relevant issues that are happening today. And let's get off a lot of this rhetoric that we hear that happened 20 years ago to some individual who, you know, had a bad experience with our police officers.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. Yes, I wanted, the question I had was, you know, Megan, as far as looking for a facilitator and you, I'm imagining that there are a lot of cities going through the same process we're going through right now. And I probably imagine that there's not a, you know, there's not an unlimited supply of facilitators that can do this type of work. Have you, I mean, how's that process kind of been so far? I mean, have we been able to identify candidates or firms that can, that are willing and have the capacity to then be able to take this on yet?
Yeah, so far we've been pleased with the proposals we've received to date. Like you stated, we were nervous going into this, both Charity and I, we each had RFQs out about what type of response we would get. And certainly, you're right in that this industry right now is at a premium in terms of the, the amount of people available and what they're able to now charge for the services that they're providing, which rightfully so. So that is something that both Chair and I were nervous going into, but I think both from what we've seen so far, where we've been pleased with the responses.
And the second part of my question I wanted to ask too was, so with this facilitator, I, pardon me for not looking at the RFQ or if you published that or not, but part of the, I'm wondering, is part of the RFQ asking about, can the supervisor provide best practices for, you know, our, our police department? Maybe we have, you know, some of those, a lot of ways, you know, that we don't need to reinvent the wheel on a lot of these things. There's things that we can, can adopt from other jurisdictions that have, that are similar size or have similar situations. So I'm seeing, you're nodding yes, then that was part of the RFQ.
Yes, absolutely. We were interested in hearing from facilitators. Basically, what we did was a pretty general outline of the three components that I've talked with you guys about when I started my presentation. And then at the very end, we asked that they make content and deliver recommendations based on industry trends. Because we want, we don't want, I don't want to get in a situation where we're directing what the facilitator does. They're the expert. They work in this field. It has to be a nice balance of here's what we'd like to see happen. Those are three kind of key components that City Manager Bennett Dale and Cherry and I talked about. And then also wanting their input on what they've seen that has worked in their other work and, and just any other ideas they have from industry best practices. So when you write these, I was very sensitive to, I don't want to be too prescriptive and too detailed about here's what I want you to do because I really wanted their feedback on how they best approached this work. But in order for them to provide a meaningful ability to make a proposal, you do have to provide some of the, the framework, I guess, if you will. And for us, that was the three, the three components of how we envision this work moving forward.
And the last thing I wanted to say too is that, I've heard it said a couple of times now too, but I, what's a little bit worrisome for me is that the idea that, you know, that if you've only been here just a few months and this, we happen to have a bad experience with the police department, to assume that because they haven't been here long enough that, that that one incident isn't reflective of the general attitude of the police department. We have to be real careful because at the same time too, we can't say that somebody that had an incident, you know, 25, 30 years ago, that it, what it does, it basically is, although it doesn't happen, it only needs to happen once. You know, for the person to experience it, it only needs to happen once. I don't think it needs to continue to happen, I mean, for us to validate that there's, there is an issue. It doesn't need to consistently happen frequently every year or several times a year. But I think that, you know, we have to, if we're going to be reaching out to people in the community asking for, for them to participate in a focus group, we have to be careful that we don't, you know, diminish their experience or whether it happened last month or whether it happened 20 years ago. Have it happened once, have it more than once. Those are things I think that we, we have to be careful that, you know, whether, again, it's much in the same way. You know, we've seen part of the need to move it as well. Just because an incident happened decades ago, it does not mean that that's not important. So those are things that we, I want us to be able to keep top of mind as well just because time should not be something that, that puts a little bit on people's feedback.
Councilwoman.
So back to the best practices discussion that Councilwoman Wind brought up. Chief, I think I've got, a lot of people had called or emailed or stopped me on the street about when we had our meeting with you and you went and responded to the request for eight can't wait, the, the policing protocols that have catch, caught on nationally. And I think they appreciated, and I did, that you went through them to say, we aren't doing those, or we aren't doing that, or that's not us, or we have work to do. And we need to look at it further. And there was the Obama administration, that policing task force, it had many, many 50-plus recommendations. But I think the calibration of where we are today with these cutting-edge or best practices or 21st century policing would be helpful to get us all educated on what we're not doing already, which people didn't realize the chokehold thing was not being done. It's not a part of our protocol, so that clarified for, for a lot of people. And just so we can go and say, how can we do better with 21st century policing? And if we're not doing these things, then people won't have to accuse our police of doing them. But let's go through the checklist from our facilitator, from our research, from staff, from your own research as to, are we doing good and can we do better? What can we do better? So a lot of people appreciated your, your input at that night, so thank you.
Councilor Koha.
So, and I did too. The only thing that is concerning to me is that we're not living in a vacuum. And even in the last few months, not quite months, things have changed as it relates to policing. And I'm not saying at, at all that we need to, you know, solve Portland's problems. What I do worry about, however, is that we're seeing a dramatic change in what constitutes policing. And we do have vulnerable populations. I don't know and would appreciate some background on how we handle, for example, requests for mites. How we handle, you know, if you were asked to participate with these emergency troops in Portland. And I, I don't know that any of that is impacting on Lake Oswego, but I would like to know if it was. And then the, the other piece being, what portion of our funds that go to police should be going towards, you know, we, I know we recently gave money to, for the, I thought it was two people that were working for Triment and would be part of the max oversight, let's say. And, and certainly we have the school resource and the elder resource person. I'm not arguing at all that we should pull any of that, but I'd like to have a discussion about to what extent we are taking from the budget to go into some of those, those other projects and, and just do another evaluation. So to sum up, the first part is definitely about race. I'd like to know where we stand in terms of these various things that are happening overnight, changing. I mean, I was told that there were, for instance, they were down to 50 people on the Portland streets and now because of something that just happened, they're up to like 2,500. So it would be good to get some education and I would certainly give you my August to learn if that made a difference.
All right. Anything further? All right, thank you. Charity, Chief, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Do we have, are we all good with August or?
Thank you. I was going to ask.
I am.
We'll be, we'll be very sensitive to your, your requests of your time. We'll, we'll balance it out as best we can, but I, I think it would be important for us to begin this work as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Got you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is consent agenda.
Move to accept the consent agenda?
Got it.
All right. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Stu Baker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lamont?
Yes.
Wendland?
Yes.
Mans?
Yes.
Koha? O'Neill?
Yes.
And Win?
Oh. We lost him somewhere.
Did we lose Councilwoman Wind?
Let me find him.
He's gone into the ether.
No, he's, he's on his way back.
There he is.
There he is.
Councilwoman Wind, we had a motion made by Councilwoman Wendland and seconded by Councilwoman Mans to adopt the consent agenda and would like to know your vote.
I heard everything. For some reason, I just went blank.
Sorry about that. Glad you're back and the motion passes unanimously.
Anybody have any information for, for Council, Councilman?
Yes, I, I want to propose something and we don't need to decide on it.
Yes, I want to propose something and we don't need to decide on it tonight, but a woman by the name of Joan Elliott Sappington passed away on June 15th. Joan Sappington really helped to grow the art scene here in Lake Oswego and paved the way for all that we do in the arts today. My proposal is that we designate a day, whatever day that may be, and we certainly can discuss this in the future, to honor her for her work in bringing the arts not only to Lake Oswego, but throughout the Portland metro area. If anyone is in agreement with this, we can certainly talk offline. Like I say, I don't, unless you'd like me to make a motion to move forward on this.
I think you're setting a precedent here and I'm not sure we want, I know you've thought about this probably, but, you know, who do we honor and who do we not honor? And who makes that decision?
I think we do.
So every council meeting, somebody can come up and say, I want to declare a day to honor somebody who's made a great contribution to the city?
That wouldn't trouble me, but as I say, if that is controversial, we can have this discussion another.
I'm not saying it's controversial, I'm just saying, once you start that.
But we just have to limit it to 365 people.
We'll continue the conversation later.
Great, okay. Good thought, though. Anybody else, information for council? Anything from officers?
Have a great August. I just want to report that the mayor and I had a bet about the time this meeting would adjourn and he's gonna win. So I'm gonna give it, I'm gonna buy him an ice cream cone.
Should we keep the discussion going? Is that what you're saying?
I need you to go an hour.
This meeting is a dream.
Well, I have a proclamation that I would like to read, but it's only 400 pages long, so I think it would, no.
Thank you.
Only Joan Sappington, okay?
So, so we'll see you, well, we'll see maybe in August, Megan, so. And could we, could we maybe have something in person about this?
With some cookies?
We would love to have something in person. Let me say out loud that all the indications are going the wrong way right now. So we are continuing to ask people to wear masks, because it appears from all of the medical guidance, if we could all just put on those darn face coverings for four weeks, we would kill off the virus by not giving it to one another.
And that also means putting face coverings on kids.
Yeah, and kids over two, kids between two and 12, and it's pretty tough to do. I think you all know my own problem with touching my own face and so, and I think it was probably a lot worse. But the reality is that cases are up, hospitalizations are up. So, and it appears that it's when people get inside together that is when the virus spreads. And so I would love to have you back. I hate Zoom meetings. Hate, 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 hate.
It is August and we could meet in one of our parks, so.
There you go.
Else.
Except for we will let anybody else reserve a park shelter, so we gotta make sure we're being fair and equitable. So it's not, I am in total support of your objective and I can't figure out a way to do the leadership by example and get what I want at the same time.
Pick me up in the park.
And unreserved, no, anyway, we could talk about this later. We'll see what we can do.
Thank you, folks.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Happy summer.